I pledge allegiance to the republic.
I think we're gonna start with you, your public comment, because I think Andrew needs to leave.
No, no, no.
Are you doing?
I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah.
That way if you're, you want to, or need to leave, you know, your role. Okay.
My name is Michael Conley. I am the president of an architectural engineering firm called the Architectural Corporation. And we met two years ago and talked about some of the thoughts they had in regard to making improvements, not only in the heating and air conditioning in this building, but other projects the county is overseeing. I talked to Mr. Hall.
I know. I'm getting a text for you to step back a little bit.
That's our camera.
That's.
Yeah.
Oh, there we go. There we go. That's.
Thank you. Michael Conley of Architectural Corporation. I hadn't seen this before. Very friendly. We had that pleasure of meeting with you two years ago. I did bring some coffee to some of the information I shared at that time just to help. Recently, I spoke with some of our qualifications we work on. Our port analysis and also county projects in 10 different counties in the state of Indiana. It's a type of client and project I personally enjoy. I'm native to Indiana. Our company has worked for 23 years in providing public projects, not only at county level, state level, and at federal level. We would like to continue the opportunity to work with you. I know that your agenda is probably very different than it was to you. But I thought I had the opportunity to interrogate our qualifications and request the opportunity to interview or speak with commissioners and other people. Commissioners, I'd like to recommend we enjoy that opportunity. We are currently working in Bavarian County next door to you, providing and designing and planning for courthouse annex for them. And we're also designing EMS center for them to be located in three different locations, but it's a good looking pattern. If you want to follow, apparently they have to rely on EMS services for other counties or in the state of Illinois. And they need to provide their own services. That's enough about them, but I'm eager to find out more about your plans. Mr. County Attorney, I don't wait.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. I also just share a couple of qualifications with. Have you seen somebody before that's a rich paper?
Right.
And Lawrence County Courthouse.
Yes.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
We replaced all the windows and we worked with. Back here. We worked with Amara. I'm replacing heating and cooling system. I don't necessarily say that we have worked with Amara. They may have worked with you last time or after that, but look forward to it. Yeah. I have a couple of brochures from my company.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes.
That's good. Frankfurt.
Frankfurt. Okay.
Yeah, that's a city. There's a lot. This is Beverly County allocation building in different counties. These are covered by the. This shows the beauty. We do a lot of this.
Right. Obviously, the others on a different end. We'd like to do it right.
And I am qualified in the department of natural re- source department of our field that's great as a certified administrator.
I know recently in AIC did a class on applying for grants and everything, and a question was asked, you know, is there any grants available for historical courthouse? And of course, the answer at the time is no.
There are actually. It depends on what it is going to do. If there's parts for ADA accessibility that could be in courthouse. I know we completed a project that was a grant in Owen County that courthouse and the commissioners were actually awarded. It took about two years after the project started that they grants are complex and very competitive. We do have a grant administrator assistant. We're starting to work with Chris and Cheryl. We've also worked with a company called EMSI in the past to help them with grant applications. So we are in a position to.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other kind of comment? We'll move on to man.
I'll second.
What was the favor? And it's one thirty one hundred and sixty and an amount of under maybe a thousand four hundred and fifty dollars and five cents. They were ones.
And they're losing their pretty well. I'll second.
What was the favor? We're giving acknowledge and certain areas by incorrect acceleration. What do you prepare this coming forward for March?
Okay. I'll second.
What was the favor? Review and acknowledge clerks monthly reported for March.
I'll make a motion to second.
I'll second.
Also favor. Reported clerk's estimated for Andy Jones' court reporter chair for the month of March.
I will make a motion.
I'll second.
What was the favor?
All right.
Okay, can't alternative to know where to do for the few voting system.
Thank you.
Public hearing part for if we open that first. Are we?
What's that?
The kind of.
No, that's right.
Okay.
Yep, let's, please show that we are opening a public hearing on ordinance to reestablish cumulative voting system fund by statute that allows the county to capture certain tax revenue for a particular purpose. This being voting systems, which are very expensive. So this is the time anybody has any comments, issues to speak publicly on, speak now. So no, we'll show the public hearing opened at nine ten. Show the public hearing closed.
Thank you. I guess you're our best.
Oh, yeah, now we're gonna do the order.
Okay, I thought we had.
No, I'm sorry. Yeah, we're public hearing now.
Just kind of.
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance twenty twenty-three dash three.
I'll second.
Always favor. Probably just have a word.
You have to publish another notice of adoption of that ordinance. Do you want me to draft that?
Yes. I don't know that. That's why.
I didn't want to see the part.
Okay. Yes, there. Forever never. I mean, well, it wasn't, it's not on there this year.
It has been, we're reestablishing the tax this year for next year's. And we collected next year. So with the voting cycle, it's usually the counties that do it is every week. It's really based on the need to keep the voting equipment current and so it's kind of on. Maybe about three years now. But if you don't reestablish it, it's a first time.
I'm down.
Then.
Love.
Thank you.
Hello.
Should make your voice.
Well, I guess I'm just quiet.
There you go.
And what I'm here for today is permission to ask for submission for the Fountain County Information Department, the Montgomery County Information Department, Montgomery County Drug Court, and the Vermont, excuse me, Park County Drug Court, and Community Corrections to submit requests for funding for the 2024 year for our grant. Basically, it's called the Community Corrections and Community Supervision Grant. It's the same title. And all those entities applying, we're not asking the county to grant the money. We're just asking permission to apply underneath your county as we always have. Anyone have a problem with that?
I'll make a motion to approve the grant. Can you guys continue on? I'll second.
Is that over?
All right.
Okay, and is it still okay? If we receive the money, do I need to come back and let you know? Usually I don't, but I want to make sure. You can just write a letter or something the amount is, you know, just one. And so.
Yes.
So. And I also just want to make an announcement that Lauren Stevens retired at the end of the year. And the advisory boards had a few different interview sessions, and we finally hired someone. They start the 24th. Her name is Susan Wakeland. She's actually been acting director for a few months of another community corrections. Was wanting to relocate for personal reasons too. So actually, it's gonna be wonderful for us to have someone step into that role and have clarity with writing the grant, the budgeting. And she already uses our same systems and the same type of mining equipment. So it's gonna be really a smooth transition, I believe. So we're excited about that, and that'll be next one day when she starts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So calling, I think you have to pick one for the. Back that. They have a name.
Yeah, there's three and on the letter. So if you were to. I assume that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so on the adequate library appointment they had asked that their commissioners make this decision. They did send three applicants for their neighborhood appointment. And Sam, did you go through this?
Yes.
I think, I think they had one start, I assumed.
That's.
I, yeah, I assumed that was their initial pick.
But they had a recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Normally.
Yeah.
We usually, we usually go along with. As.
Okay.
So I had no problem, you know, with that person.
And it was.
Right.
Yes.
Bill.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. And I'll second that based on their recommendation.
What was the favor?
All right.
Right.
On those. I'm not biased if.
If it's anyone, it's I.
She knows that.
Do we need to bring the brand?
The first thing to type this, well, that's is usually the probably the best titles I've ever known. I typed it, so that's.
If you can, you can amend it.
Okay. That's a good one. I have a bit.
Okay.
Sorry. Going to the next friend of yours. That save each other.
Yes.
This, this is on the community crossing grant. For authorizing the execution of some of the agreements within that one. And compared this document for us based on past, you know, we have that resolution brief, maybe crossings.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash eight.
I'll second.
Favor.
All right.
There. I want to start the discussion about the real estate property in the county bond and.
Yeah, so I have, this has been a long process and I call it, it is a very difficult and convoluted statute. And it's, it's by design. There's a lot of hoops to jump through for a municipal entity to sell the real estate. There. In the initial phase, when we discussed the threshold issues is if the average, once you authorize the appraisals, if the average of the two appraisals is above a certain threshold of fifty thousand dollars, then the fiscal bodies require to approve. In, in that statute changed a while back, a few years ago. And I had interpreted that if you didn't meet the fiscal bodies, you didn't need a public hearing. But that was, I was mistaken on that. So we have noticed a public hearing, you have to have a public hearing that we had for the. Fun, we just went through on the propriety of selling the property. And that's, that is noticed for the May first meeting. But to. With anticipation that that will go well, will prove the sale on first. Keep, you know, to keep things moving, the commissioners can handle the sale themselves. You can notice the sale and you can have bidders come in, buy bids, and you can see the bids. And then there's another process where you can allow them to bid it up. But it's, you have to give time. They have to be able to come in, do them, and you have to mail out to the bidders. And it makes it a long run process. The other thing that you can do by statute is hire a licensed auctioneer. And the auctioneer handles the advertising, the auctioneer handles all the, all the, the public notices. And then the auctioneer handles the sale. And then the sale, you know, by there's a body wall that applies the auction. And that's what, that's what buyers are used to. If you hire an auctioneer, you get a broader, broader publication. You know, we, we just do it ourselves. It goes to Fountain County neighbor and I think it's Fountain County neighbor. But, you know, even in large communities, I don't know how many people look at notices or even know that stuff is going on. So my recommendation, and it's the reason we're doing this now ahead of the hearing is, if you authorize hiring a auctioneer to handle both the properties, then it's about a 30 day cycle. I spoke with, with Klingon Auctions. And Mr. Klingon can handle both the sales and have those ready to go, anticipating the favor to blow on first. He can have those ready to go and then. And then midnight. And the, the cost of the sale is the advertising, if the county does it itself, can be around a thousand dollars because you have to notice both properties. And here, there's a little bit of additional cost with the auctioneer, but you're, you're gonna get better bid. And, and I need your, and it just removes you from the household. And, and bidders get, you know, bidders can get mad at you. They, they aren't going to be bid. And, and it's, it's a better function than that. So my recommendation is today to authorize the county to hire. And I just, Mr. Klingon's local, so I recommend him, but whoever you guys authorize hiring an auctioneer to.
Sam, is there anything with the having to, they agree to share everything that you could? Not enough?
Okay.
Because. I mean, I would like to have him and his nephew, Matt Perry, do it and just, I'll talk to him about it. Greg can do the county farm property. Matt can do the two thirty-four, that's down in his area property. Then they can just split it. Be perfect. They do that both workforce and they both done great jobs, so.
I am, just make a motion to hire those two.
I'll make a motion to hire Matt Perry and his great claim in contention that they're going together. I'll second.
What was the favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Right. I'm gonna turn it over to Andrew. We did get a letter from.
Um, hands on the tax letter. Did you have a chance to look through that from Cameron?
No, but I, I, I saw some of those communications and I have any, which you would, if there's recommendations or.
Okay. I, I didn't either. I just wanna be clear with you real quick with that. So. We are going to partner with, I'm only with tax because I'm not sure how to pronounce it. I don't need to involve in that. But Cameron Starnes is the attorney that's gonna be working with us. And he had proposed an engagement letter for the BOT process of the county annex and getting advertised. His, his engagement is basically project delivery, evaluation strategy, RPQ, drafting a publication, guidance on proposal evaluations and such a process, negotiation and drafting of BOT engagement with a selected operator, along with any other agreements that may be needed. He did have a weak C cost of twenty-five thousand of his engagement. I, he is very knowledgeable in this area. That's really all he does in this world for a lot of other people. I feel very confident he'll be able to help us along the way. There, there's so much tedious work that goes along with some of this stuff that.
Well, some of the bigger firms are involved in the lobbying. It's the statutes are kind of crafted the way that they are. So I mean, they, when they say they know the ins and outs of the statutes, probably it's because they helped write them.
Yeah, sure.
Sure. So and, and Cameron Starnes is the, he's, you know, he grew up in Robbinsville. He's a really great man and a really good lawyer. This is, this is his, his focused practice.
Definitely. Yep. So with that being said, I do make a motion to approve the engagement letter with half law with Cameron Starnes.
I'll second.
There.
All right.
Okay, anything else before we move on to department heads? Okay. Start there. Okay. Exciting.
I'm waiting right here.
So just one thing I have. Have you guys in the man in April about the paving, which we made recommendation, went to the council last week. They are requesting I do an additional for that amount. I would like to also include in this additional, I did get a quote from Ricketts Electric on the outside lights. Repairing the outside lights and labor, some kind of four thousand one hundred dollars. So I would like to request an additional amount of one thousand seventeen thousand dollars, four hundred and fifteen dollars to repair the pavement and lights mentioned.
Seventeen.
Seventeen thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars.
Anything else that you can foresee with your crystal ball coming up?
Those are, we got the flooring murder done. It was waiting on John to come up and get that all taken care of. We got the flooring picked out and everything. He was gonna send a guy up to figure out how we were gonna. Plan on taking everything out of there to get that done. Rock, I'm ahead. I can't think of anything else right now. Those are the huge things. Now, we've gotta get the, gotta get the driveway done. If we don't, we're gonna lose it. We got some large cracks in the front that are gaping out pretty bad. And there's a section on the back side that's gotta be replaced.
I'll make a motion to. The additional for paving and outside lights for the amateur.
I'll second. Will the council determine where the important part?
And I'll work with Colin. We're currently talking, so yeah. I don't know. Stay very busy as usual. Work heavy. Lot of process going on, a lot of new parts. Don't know where on any trucks yet.
We're.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good. Everybody had that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Derek Blackett.
Yeah.
Jason. And so there's nothing.
Okay. I have for our dust control agreements. I would like to go in advertise whether, I don't know where we would advertise that in the paper, where we can go on the website. We did have some training last week on the website, so I can get in there and put our page. We have, just like what Warren County has, that I would like for the individuals to come in and fill out, just so we know which, where the oil shot is located, dust control is located at. So we have that and I have a contact number, your GLC fluoride, that she does not mind taking everything on the room. So payments, everything comes through, go through her.
Wow.
We just, we just need the people to come in and put the agreement in sign. So if you guys want to copy that, that's for you. We did get a board of our union proximist grant twenty twenty-three to River Road North.
Is that, is that a contract of disinformation?
That's, that's just information, man.
But I think that's, but they're looking. Yeah, yeah, it was, so basically when they sign it, we really don't have anything to. County.
No, what we'll do is we'll go up to her, they'll flag it, we'll prepare and grade it.
But if I have a beef with it.
It's up to you. It's through.
Between him and.
Okay.
Yeah.
They use, they use that for me. Yeah, that for all of another entity.
Or, or the right of the same, is there?
That I'm not sure. That's just the quote they gave us. So like I said, we received their award for union crossings for twenty twenty three this year for Long River Road. I'll be working with ten dog and get a contract together and start taking bids here soon. They were going to start working on Xavier Road at structure work being fixed, but the weather this morning. They held off, so tomorrow morning we'll be doing that.
So you're still open this afternoon?
Still open this afternoon and close after eight tomorrow. And once they get their reconstruction down on the bridge, we'll follow in behind them and have the road and get paid back. Hopefully, it's gonna be down between us, but. We're working here, man. Um, Rock was able to find us. Source for concrete box and fill back road down there where we've had some issues where the bridge is on the residence. Uh, got a couple of bids from other companies and Roger called me last week. There's a company over in Crocker's that had an extra one. Is the exact same size, we're half the price, so just wait to hear back to see when we pick that up. So we'll be able to offer, and the the next very, the structure and all ceiling and everything was like forty seven hundred dollars. So. We're, we're, we have a problem down on Walk Road. And I don't know if you guys are aware of this. I I got a phone call from one of the farmers last week, um. Butch Block taking care of a section from eight forty. Down to his house. He's been doing this forever. But the problem now is, um. I got some pictures, the tandem of the trailer. Was the outside tins were not touching the the crown of the road, so. So Steve, that they were having trouble with their augers and. See Kendra down the, down the road. Um, if it's okay with you, I'd like to go down and talk to Mr. Block. First, before we do anything, um, as far as getting Ken involved, see if we can handle that way, but. It is an issue, so.
Is it just, is it some of the priorities that are there?
No, no.
So. We, we need to talk back and.
No, that's all. Yeah, it's it's nothing. If if I think I could go down there and talk to him and tell him what's going on, run it. Situation, so it's no big deal. I do have a, a meeting in Turkey Run for the I H S district Thursday that I'll be going to. And uh, next week I will be on vacation.
So, um, I'm just here to ask for this collaboration and carryover request, um, from the rail line items. Um, it's been our board members. Uh, we're asking for an increase from three hundred and twenty five dollars a year to a thousand dollars a year. Um, for each board member. We have seven board members. So, um, that would go from a budget of a, of a yearly of twenty three fifty to seven thousand. And then in our group health, um, it's only budgeted for two employees to have group health. We actually have three employees for group, group health. But we'll need to add additional, additional of twenty one thousand, two hundred and one dollars on that as well.
Um, did you need additional in your education attorney? Because at one time we had talked about.
I want to see that as a carryover from one of its state records.
Carryover in the local health movements or one of those sort of events and on the delts on that.
Yeah, yeah. So I I have a list of things. So, um, county attorney, um, we have budgeted for a thousand dollars. We're asking for an increase of nineteen thousand dollars to be able to one thousand a year.
We'll spend every penny of it.
Yeah.
I think the last attorney they had, so his rate was like five hundred bucks an hour. So at least you get a two hour.
Well, right. So, um, that is, it is greatly needed, you know, for the properties that we're working on, um, you know, so that way we can fulfill those. So phones, um, our adopted budget was eight hundred dollars, um, and we're four hundred dollars short. Um, because we have two hundred and forty dollars per employee for the year, and then we have five employees. So we're running an additional four hundred dollars. And, um, let me keep that to our vehicle interest. Um, we're budgeted eight hundred dollars and it's been, um. Every year it's, it's about twelve hundred dollars. We're four hundred dollars short.
So are you wanting four hundred dollars additional for that?
Yes.
I'm writing this down. Okay, I don't have a dollar round for the, um.
And that was the difference from seven thousand to twenty three fifty.
Yeah.
I mean, she's still gone.
I'm still going. I don't know, yeah. So our eleven sixty eight, which is our local health maintenance fund, um, transportation, which actually includes our lodging conference and mileage. Uh, we were appropriated five hundred dollars and I'm asking for fifteen hundred, which that'll be a carryover request as well. And then same with the training and education, um, I'm asking for a thousand dollar increase. It was five hundred dollars, I'm asking for an additional thousand. Uh, conferences have increased, prices have gone up significantly, plus we have two new employees. So. Um, also in our ninety seven seventy five F E P grant, um, with the split between the two counties, the state. Did a fifty fifty, so we're gonna be short six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. So. So I'll have to, um. Figure something out. Um, I think I can request that as a carryover out of eleven sixty eight as well.
Going forward, the state won't split those grants in the future.
Right.
Yeah, we have any more.
Yeah, I hope that hopefully we're getting closer to being done with all of that, but. Uh, and then also, this is a notice, um. Shelley is working on our, she's our school liaison and she is doing some programs with our schools and she is going to be using approximately five thousand dollars for some restful appropriations. Um, coming up in the next couple of months. So that'll be out of ninety seventy one. I don't think I need to ask for a request, so she's making more.
Um, going back to the thing, and let me ask you this, Colin, because if it was advertised that we were gonna spend X amount of dollars. We still gonna. I don't know if you're gonna have to ask for additional, what we budgeted for, even though they only give us half the money.
Don't come out to be for funds.
Okay, don't come out of dish, bud.
Yeah, or thinking about or something.
So I guess, I guess we can just make the motion to approve a contingent on what fund the council, you know, choose to.
I tried to divide it up to where maybe it would work balance out.
Okay.
I'm not gonna try to run through all these again. I'm just gonna make a motion, um. To approve the additional appropriations and carryover as submitted from the health department for Jenny.
So, but. Then just their health department, um. We, we filed a code enforcement case against the Van Helle property on I seventy four. And that's, that's in suit and we got, we got service with. Helping the county chair and helping the city county chair. We got, uh, we got service. And so now any other discussions about that, um, we're in a executive session.
Maybe.
Other than needing money, everything else is good, though. It's a little bit of the team, because it's time to carry over.
Yeah, time to carry over your class. So the, um, eleven fifty nine would be the, um.
Right here, just track off these. This is gonna be additional.
Um, so eleven fifty nine is my additional, correct?
Yeah.
Um, so eleven fifty nine is gonna be forty five thousand, six fifty one, forty five, six, five one.
Friends cheers. Yeah.
And and some of the third, third thousand mill per county journey is.
Well, the thing is. I should say the old apartment wasn't real hip about going after cleaning places up.
Oh, yeah.
And we are.
Yeah, for sure.
So.
We've done a lot of work.
Yeah. Yeah.
Keep them busy. So I.
It is happening.
Just have them.
And I will say that the board members have been attended by every member and they've been about. Two and a half, three hours long. And they are doing their homework outside of meetings too.
They're engaged.
They're engaged.
Very involved, so.
So, and I'm the one that, that, you know, that can get these guys a little better.
Yeah.
Does it be junk two fifty for the year?
A lot of that, that's an interest in the community and drive their backgrounds and everything else, so that's very.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
We'll skip over Jonathan, I think he's here. Josh, do you have something?
Okay, if if he, I'm muted, tries to talk, sorry, yes, there he is. Hi, you're muted.
Patient and with the weather, I talked to several about data, which I'll be making a plan this week. Um. Also working with Robin from New York County, because we are on COVID together, but this will be separate.
Okay.
Billing, all that will take care, and their warm hands mind that too. Um, mass notification, I could probably lynch up to four or five or have a meeting out of this with one. And then we'll go from there. May twenty fifth, I think, is the. Code red is done, so I need to work quickly on the mass notification, because I'm gonna use code red, text out, let everybody know we changed.
Okay.
And then we're gonna lose all those other mountain.
Oh, that'd be great. Yeah.
Instead of going back out, other than that, that's.
And and just to be clear, um, the public standpoint, um. I think a mass certification for the county is huge. Um, the highway department, um, everybody else could use that just as well. I think it'd be great if we had control over that instead of a party, I think you can send around notifications out, so.
And you utilize it a little.
Absolutely, yeah, on just more so than just weather stuff.
Okay, right, right. And I already talked to Jason.
Yeah.
And I talked to, and I've never talked to, um, Terry. But, and I've got them as a user, for them to do their own use.
I mean, even like our recycling days that we have, and stuff like that, we can send out to the county.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, this, for us.
I mean, everything.
Road closure, stuff like that, it's good, it'd be great. Thank you for working that.
Yeah.
And I don't, do we need to publicly give her a motion to? Go bam, so she's signing a contract?
I'll just try to act like that.
Yeah, yeah, I'll make a motion. I'm pretty to continue on and talk about it, bam.
And I do have it in the budget to take care of the the van. The mass certification will be different, which I think we talked a lot about. And I don't think we put it all in the budget, we just take care of it, but that will be.
Yep.
Different, but I can take care of one year, and we did a three year contract, but I told my home, I mean, one year of this year, because that's what we did.
Okay, that's fine.
And thank you very much for working.
Thank you.
And you worked for six percent near.
Yeah, I can see.
Right there.
Right there.
Okay.
Looks good. It's getting there.
I did forget one thing, Sam, we brought up, I had other expense, um, bird issue in the, in the station. Uh, you and I talked briefly about that. It is an ongoing issue. Uh, we had different, looking at putting netting in there. Uh, we had, um, company or the helmet group to come up and look at maybe putting the ceiling in. The way the garage doors are set, it's gonna be nearly impossible to put it in there. So we need to really seriously look at that and we probably need to look seriously at.
Climate control.
Yeah, um, there was a twofold, maybe make an I call it cathedral style ceiling, you know, going up to the I beams. Uh, but the the heating and cooling on that might be expensive, so we're gonna drop the ceiling down to a drop ceiling. But with the garage doors, the harness group looked at it like, hmm. I don't know what we need to do with that. But that's something seriously to look at, because they are. Cracking over on everything. And with medical supplies and that, that's not probably.
I think we talked about this. Can we have units that control just the ambulances hooked up in the bay or not?
You're at by individual air conditioners and you're getting that, you know, plugged in there and all that.
I don't know whether the mobile you can just.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I, I think maybe.
You got a hand here? Have you ever seen anything like that?
Well, yeah, I sure.
Or, or, or ambulances, I know like the medical helicopters don't do that, but it's homemade.
Yeah, okay, okay.
I don't know, I, I need, need somebody to be looking at that seriously, because it's a place to get it first. I don't know if there's set devices put on the outside of the building, we've tried it and everything we've tried. From putting a Falcon on the outside, it worked the first year and it quit. We got it hanging up in the ceiling now. We had somebody who said little compact discs, the the.
Plating, yeah.
That didn't work. We've tried all kinds of different things and they're not staying out. They're barn swallows and. You can't. You can't do anything with them because they're wrong there. Yes, and.
Yeah.
Yep, we tried to do these things and they don't work. Yeah, Paul, go ahead.
I was supposed to say, there's those electronic festival things, we've done one, the locals and such. And it kind of went bad because it had a real, real high pitch, but the pitch it's got now. Old Spurs, yeah, I don't know why, I don't know why, but the thing went bad, it didn't, Karen Bar out of the side of.
Inside, see, we got one on the inside right now. It don't work.
Can you hear it?
Well, no.
You can't, Mike.
They say you're not supposed to hear it.
I, the roads, yes.
Really? Oh, maybe it are. We might try that, maybe it's a great, I don't know, I can see, but we've had a big threat on. Yes, the AR came in and told us, they work for us now, but we couldn't do any of it. We could have been in cars. So.
Let's think a little bit.
That's what I'm just saying is, just bring it to your attention, gonna have to be another expense. I don't know when, but we're gonna have to address that. And with the medications we're carrying, that we've got away with at this point, we're gonna have to really. They're starting to look at the temperature control more and more, because it will affect the effectiveness of the medication. Temperature control more and more because it will affect the effectiveness of the medication.
The ceiling roof is a little on insulation on it.
No, it's got a, looks like a layer on it.
That's something.
Yeah.
Do you have fans in there?
No, we do not.
I'd say air conditioning, thanks with fans and it could be done. Door shut.
It's over.
Fan can circulate and bring down, add a layer.
And do you want to reach out to somebody, have them in and please close in the ceiling part of it and put the fans in or first we're going to have to have heating and cooling. I think Reynolds came and looked at it and was going to, we had it from Reynolds. They looked at this about three, four years ago.
I can't even tell you the number of this.
I don't either, but they was. Yeah, but it's true, three vendors looking at it. But we had to get the ceiling dropped, they would not do it because that's when we brought the office group in and they looked at.
If those guys wanted the ceiling dropped, they would do it.
To get better temperature control, that's what would be the best. But if we have to, we can't do that, and I guess maybe an option, putting the fans in more could push it. That may be the other option we have, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, finish my head if you. And while we're there, we, there's still, I still got some of those mercury. All lights in there too, we put in some of those LEDs. We're all going to be there, might as well do all that too. So. So you asked about extra spends, yes, but I don't have any. The only thing, the other thing that came in was Terminix did come in and look, they could put a netting up. Then you don't have any temperature control. What's the netting would keep them from landing and making nests? But we did close up part of, or the separates the living borders from the bay. We got up there, we was able to, you know, close that, that was still open a little bit. We had to close that up and close the other side up too. But they're landing up on the. I-beams itself and building nests up there. Spiking things, you put it up on the thing.
What's the ballpark, if you went the HVAC route, what is the cost going to be? Over fifty thousand or?
I'd say it'd be ever better than that. I think if if I had.
For someone a little bigger, I think the AC system would come beyond thirty.
That thirty, thirty-five, I remember my brain, but that number would be around there.
And then that don't count the ceiling itself, you know, the, whatever you do with the.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, Ken, I think the department is pretty close to that.
It it just makes a difference on whether that would be a public work or whether you have to, if you're below fifty thousand. You can do the phone quotes. And if it's above fifty thousand, you have to do the formal, formal written quote process.
Okay.
Just get a, and get Rogers estimate or an HVAC contractor estimate and then that'll determine how we.
Okay.
Whether above or below for the bidding process.
I can have DT come back in and give me a rest on that.
You might get a isolated quote, like just some fans, I don't know if you're like a big ass fan or, you know. Those are good. Yeah. I've used them at Scottfield, Indy, the National Guard, they like big ass fans. I mean, I've worked around them a lot and they hurt all areas like that and they do five volumes.
Okay.
Air, look at that air.
Really, it's a drop ceiling.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I'll look at those.
Keep the eyes wide open in case funding comes for one or for the others, so. Okay.
That's all that he brought there and I just follow that.
Okay. Thank you.
Josh did text me, he said he just wanted to talk to us about a staffing change, I think they are using. I can talk about that, Josh. Are you awake, Josh?
Well, we're waiting on him, Parag goes back and said he's in Tennessee.
Okay.
He's in Tennessee.
He said he can't get it, but I'm new. We're trying on our end, so. There.
Well, the only thing under the sheriff, I was going to report. Prisoner's lawsuit has, when a. I think, person in the prison system files a case against a government entity, they're incarcerated, there's an initial screening process that the judges. Federal judges go through. This person has filed a case and it's made it through that initial phase. But his lawsuit is only against two county deputies, it's not against the sheriff's department and it's not against the county. But that paperwork, if we get that paperwork today and then turn it into the county's.
We're trying to communicate with them. Well, we're just wondering if you need to load. Since we can't communicate.
Brenda, I got it. Now I can't hear you, so anyway, I was just going to tell you guys that I made a staffing change April the first. I appointed Luke Adams to fill the empty slot left by Mr. Howell last fall. Luke is scheduled for certification class in September, middle of September. So throughout the summer, he'll be working with me and the rest of the department to kind of learn the ins and outs of how we do things in Fountain County. And then he can do the, learn the way that the state does things in the fall, so that's all I really had.
Hey, hey, Josh?
Yes, sir.
Do me a favor?
I can try.
Take your camera and flip it around and look up at the ceiling.
Oh, my gosh, you're asking so many things.
Yeah, I don't know why the big.
Okay. Here, let me get to a corner.
Right.
Alright, so, so this is the, I'm in the southwest corner of the garage. So this is the living room Walt Garth was talking about, that's north.
Can you walk towards the middle, walk in the middle?
Yep.
Don't fall.
And then. That center section is what Garth was talking about, where they like to nest.
If you had like two or three.
Three big vans that suck it down like crazy. Or whichever you want.
See, the original proposal was if you see those. I-beams going across, they were going to close that in and create what I call the David style, I guess. We were worried about the heating and that, so then that's where we were going to go right above the garage doors and come straight across to make a, like a drop ceiling.
Yeah.
And with the way the doors are set, there's not enough room from the top of the door. And where the tracks come out to where they can come straight across. To make it like a drop ceiling.
I think you're right.
And that's where the office group came in, who, I believe the office group that came in did, it's actually the one that built this build originally, built this building. It has a frame style and everything.
They're doing the wall taller night out there, but they're.
So. Yeah.
You all good?
Thank you, Rod.
Yep.
I knew mine didn't look like, but I didn't pronounce it. No, I don't, I didn't see it.
I don't think there's a ceiling with a big fans, they do.
They do, maybe with a lot there.
A lot.
They go speed, but they didn't.
So air conditioning fan.
So you don't think we use.
No, no.
What? I don't think birds out, they can plant it on people's house?
I think if you sure have. Doors down, all the conferences got air conditioned, they're just going to come in and out when you open the door.
I don't wonder if we need to, that's why the state is to include that, keeping the knot in there. And then put the fans in on the air conditioning. But they're going to still continue to land.
Wait until it's got.
Yeah. On top of beans. Are they a lot cheaper than the film? That's fighting stuff where they have nowhere to land.
The fans with the.
Yeah, yeah, I don't like that fan.
Yeah, that building at the National Guard is an aircraft hangar and that pad opens feeling just like that. You can expose the and the pans and air cool and heat and the fans can help them.
Yeah, they keep them out then.
Yeah, okay.
Click with that way and it's happy to come back.
Yes, those, those fans are not a great experience either. They're big, but they're not embarrassing.
Well, thanks. Then you have to stay away from the expense now, we can just call names until we get to that point.
Yeah. Okay. I can help you with a couple vendors who reached out to you, at least you have numbered them too. Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Brenda, am I still authorized to sign the board? And. I don't wish to pass the resolution right there.
That's, that's the resolution we just passed and I think it, I think it has to be signed by Brenda.
I did sign that resolution, but I know moving forward, we. He could talk about maybe Jason could sign some paper.
Well, just, just check with, it's the golden rule and that has a goal, we have to follow them. And so. Just check with them, tell them we passed the resolution, I would say the. President can authorize, department head can give you authority, but it's, it's up to them.
Sure. Something that's really pretty easy to clear. Looked past slash, what came back, it's one thing to go, so it's.
See what they say and then we just have to trust.
I'll make motion, both of you.
I'll say it.
Bye.
Thank you.